All right, everybody. It is 6:00 PM, so we'll call the meeting to order.
All right.
Yes.
Roll call. Mayor Holland?
Here.
Mayor Proton Messer?
Here.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Finch? Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Norma?
Here.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Thank you. All right. This time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Taylor to lead us in our opening prayer tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, bow your heads, please. Almighty God, I just want to say thank you for letting us all come out tonight, letting us live in such a wonderful place, letting us have the fellowship tonight, and please give us the guidance up here that we all need to find the right path for Emerald Isle and keep us on the right path. And remember, this is the season that we all stay blessed for, and please put that Christmas spirit in all of us and keep it in us all year long. In God's name, I pray. Amen.
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 Everyone, please stand and face the flag with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number five would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
Slow move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next, we have a few public announcements. We have a blood drive coming up December 16th from 1, excuse me, I can't read that, 4, 1:00 to 5:30 in the community center. Storytime and pre-K play are Mondays at 9:00 AM in the community center. Merry Christmas from the town of Emerald Isle. Our town administrative offices will be closed December 23rd through the 27th. Our community center closes at 5:00 PM on December 23rd and will reopen on December 26th. The police department lobby will be closed after 4:00 PM on December 24th and will remain closed through December 25th. The town's administrative offices will be closed Monday, January 2nd. Our next Neighborhood Watch Board meeting will be held January 3rd at 6:00 PM at the police department. And our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held Tuesday, January 10th at 6:00 PM here in the town boardroom. All right. Next up will be, item number seven will be our public comments segment of the meeting. There was a sign-up sheet in the back. I noticed we have several people signed up for public comment tonight. Couple of things there. If someone has commented on, we will have a public hearing regarding McLean Spell Park and the UDO amendments, so if you wish to make a public comment on that or anything else, I just request that we keep, there'll be a timer on the screen when you come up to the podium. It'll have three minutes on there. Don't want you to have to stare at it the whole time, so we get down to about a minute. I'll just hold a minute up to let you know that we have a minute left in our public comments. We want everybody to have a chance to comment on whatever they see fit, but we also want to be respectful of everybody else's opportunity as well. So with that, we'll start the public comment portion of the meeting.
So, under the regular public comment, we have Irv Monclova.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
This is an invitation to come and visit us tonight at 115 Arthur Drive. We have 11 incredibly interesting lasers illuminating our house, and I would love to see you all stop by and look at it. Arthur Drive. You get there easily. Just go on 58 going towards the east, past the police station where we are. Turn left first on Lee Street because you must see the best, most beautiful display of Christmas decorations I have ever seen in Canal Street. So make a left on Lee, make a right on Canal, and right on your left, you'll see a display there that is really worthwhile seeing. Continue on Canal going east, make a right at the end. That's Craig Street. Cross over 58, make a left, and that's Arthur Drive. That's where my small house is. You are invited to stop by. Get off the car, come and, I'll be there waiting for you. I'll guide you around the house. I think you will like the best part in the back of the house. God bless you all. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That is it for the public comment portion.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. Item number eight would be our consent agenda.
Mayor, if I can, I'd like to offer a two-sentence change for clarity to our November 8th meeting minutes.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yes, sir.
So the two sentences are during the town manager's presentation on the McLean Spell Park on November 8th, 2022, reference was made to the 30-acre tract of land. Prior to the town's ownership and preservation of the park, the property was zoned to allow up to 237 condominium units. And Mayor, the reason I'm offering that is just for clarity and that the verbiage stay consistent to what we've stated the last several years.
All right. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda plus the amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. All right. Next up would be item number nine. We have a very special retirement recognition tonight. We have happily and sadly accepted the resignation of our town attorney, Richard Stanley. He's been with us for 42 years, so we have a couple of distinguished guests in the house tonight that would like to say a few words, and then we have a couple of things for Richard All right. I wanted to start with, mayor that has served with Richard Stanley a few years back, I want to bring up first Mr. Ronnie Watson.
Wow. It's been a long time. My friend, I'm gonna probably get emotional, but this guy right here is something else. Back in 1977, we needed a town attorney. So who do we get? He was just a young'un, but we got Richard Stanley. And what a blessing he has been, not just for the town, but what a blessing he is as a person. He's done so much for this town. He did a lot of it for nothing because he loved this town, and he loves Carteret County, mayor of both of them. Very distinguished. Richard, you were loved by many, and you will always be loved and cared for, and I thank you for being my friend.
Next up, I'd like to invite Art Schools. Take your time.
Richard, I want to thank you for all the service you've done in the 42 years. I started thinking, that's 500 and some meetings. And that's not even counting, that's covering some board meetings in addition to all the other meetings that go on, so I just got tired thinking about it. But tell you, when I think about you, I think about you as being someone that when I ask you a question, you give a direct answer. You don't give a lot of this, well, on the one hand, on the other hand, on this hand, it's like, okay, this is my best opinion on it, go with it. So I certainly appreciate that, and I can't tell you how much I enjoyed having you at the board meetings when I was mayor because I knew when I was up there that if I got sidetracked somewhere, you were gonna get me back on track, so I really appreciate that. And Ronnie hit on that about how much you'd done for the town, you know, outside of being the town attorney or basically for nothing or whatever, you know, having worked for two major law firms and seeing the billing rates of all these attorneys, your billing rates were a deal, so I appreciate that. The last comment doesn't have, I saw in the agenda package that Brian Eads will probably be appointed as the new town attorney, and he has represented Emerald Isle in a couple of cases in the past, and I can't say enough good things about Brian Eads. Tremendous choice. Look forward to seeing you tomorrow on the golf course.
Thank you, Mayor Schools. Like to right now bring up our former town manager, Mr. Frank Rush. I saw him around, there he is.
Richard, I just want to echo the comments from Ronnie and from Art. Just a true pleasure to work with you for 15 of those 42 years. Come to think of it, that's only about a third of his total time with the town, so just an amazing, amazing contribution you made to the town, to me personally, to our staff, always a great resource, always willing to help, always firm when you needed to be and flexible when you could be on the issues we were dealing with. So always appreciated that. The town is a much better place for your service, so we wish you well in your retirement, and thank you.
And we received a message from former mayor Eddie Barber. Sent us a few words to say he was unfortunately unable to be with us tonight, but I'd like to read those words on behalf of Eddie Barber. "When I think of Richard Stanley, two words come to mind: integrity and honesty. This pretty much sums up Richard. He was always honest, and his integrity was beyond reproach. I cherish my time working with Richard. He always served with a passion to do what is right. Richard, enjoy your retirement. May God's blessing be with you." Help me, Anna. Mr. Stanley, would you join me, please? I've said it once, and I'll say it again, I've thoroughly enjoyed the one year that I've had the opportunity to serve alongside you. Your reputation preceded you. The people in the room here, the words that have been spoken are a true testament to your professionalism, your dedication, and your character. So just like Mayor Schools, Mayor Barber, Mayor Watson, Mr. Rush, yourself, it's an honor to serve alongside you and carry on the tradition of servant leadership that you guys have all provided. Little recognition for you here. The town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation and gratitude to Richard L. Stanley. In recognition of your outstanding service to the town of Emerald Isle, embodying our values of integrity, commitment, and service, and for exemplifying steadfast dedication and loyalty, you made a difference in Emerald Isle. We wish you success and happiness in your future retirement. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens of the town of Emerald Isle, presented this 13th day of December 2022. One more little token of our appreciation. We'll let you enjoy that at your leisure. You can open it if you want. There we go. Careful. There we go. Didn't want it to fall out on you there. Little message engraved in the back there. We hope you enjoy it, and again, thank you, sir. Would you like to say a few words?
It's been a lot of fun. I've met a lot of wonderful people. Ronnie was the mayor when I first was hired. I'll tell you a little funny story about that. The guy that I replaced was named Henry Boss Ammer. He was my counselor at Boyd State. Little did I know that I'd be replacing him as town attorney, but once he found out he was being replaced, he came in and took his artwork, he had artwork, Ronnie may remember this, on the wall. He said, "If that's the way you're gonna feel about it, I'll take my artwork home." I don't have any artwork here, but let me tell you something. This place is beautiful. You've got the most wonderful town on the North Carolina coast. You've taken care of it. It was a pleasure to work with you and work for you. I appreciate all the boards and the mayors and the commissioners and the managers I worked with. It's truly been fun, and I'm gonna miss you very much. So thank you.
Not one soul in Carteret County that I could call and say, "So what's this guy really like? Is he kind of a beach bum?" It didn't take me long to figure out he was no beach bum, and I think if I had called you and said, "What's he like?", you'd have probably told me, "It's a go." So I'm glad I did, and it has been a pleasure for him and for me, too. It's a beautiful place.
We appreciate you letting us borrow in. You get in for the rest of the time. All right. Item number 10 would be some Emerald Isle Police Department updates. Like to invite Chief Michael Panzarella, please. Real quickly before, I almost missed one thing, and I do certainly, certainly apologize. One more addition to Mr. Stanley's recognition and our show of gratitude. We'd like to name our conference room over at the town administrative office, the Richard Stanley Conference Room. The slide got passed me, I apologize, but thank you for all of your years of service, and got a nice dedication over at the town admin building, and we're honored to name our conference room after you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to provide some updates from the Emerald Isle Police Department. I'd like to ask Officer Ethan Bourne to come forward, please. As Ethan's making his way forward, over the past couple of months, Ethan has had quite a few accomplishments. Ethan has obtained his advanced certificate from the Criminal Justice Education Training and Standards Division. This is a combination of years of experience along with continuing education in the law enforcement field. It requires dedication and motivation from the individual officer. So to qualify for this, you either have to have 12 years in law enforcement and 48 training points. Well, those 48 training points, 20 hours of law enforcement training equals one point. So if I did the math correct, it is getting kind of late, almost past my bedtime, that's about 960 hours. If you had nine years, you would have to have 60 points, which is 1,200. So quite an accomplishment. Ethan obtained this a couple of months ago, and we were not able to recognize him at that time. Also, Ethan has obtained the rank of Master Patrol Officer through the Emerald Isle Police Department's Police Career Advancement Program. In this particular rank, you have to have an additional 248 hours in the subject matters of supervision, incident command, investigation, and leadership. So at this time, I would like to award Master Patrol Officer Ethan Bourne with a certificate for achievement.
That's a lot of training.
Next, I'd like to give you an update on the Emerald Isle Car Show. I want to give just a huge thank you to everyone who was part of the inaugural Emerald Isle Car Show. What a success. We raised $22,548 through registration, through merchandise sales, donations, sponsors, and raffles. Through November 10th, we have some expense of $8,997, I'm sorry, let me do that again, $8,997 with a total net of $13.5. Those funds raised will go towards our first annual shop with a cop, and just as I think Mr. Watson said, he was gonna get emotional, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna try not to get emotional here because this is an inaugural shop with a cop for us, and we are able this year to serve 11 students from four different schools, and out of those 11 young folks, it encompasses six families. And on Thursday, November 15th, there will be 10 officers from the Emerald Isle Police Department that will be escorting these young folks to make their Christmas a little bit better. And this would not have been possible without our community coming together, the support of our town officials. It's truly amazing. We could only hope next year to double this, and let me just add, those six families are gonna have a Christmas meal provided for them as well. So again, thank you from those who dawned the idea to those who contributed. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Janet. Tired of talking. Say I've had an opportunity to visit that car show, and even if it had been in its 10th year, it was very well put together and very well run, so thank you to you, Officer Blaylock, and everybody else that had a hand in making it the success that it was. Very, very nice job. All right. Item number 11 would be our McLean Spell, uh, McLean Spell Park Master Plan. Matt, do you need any updates or anything before we go into the hearing if you want?
Yes, sir. We have a very abbreviated portion of the presentation we've given at the last two board meetings. If you'd like, we can hit it 100,000.
Please, sir.
Thank you. So for those that have been following and tracking with us as we have worked over the last 12 months on the McLean Spell Park Master Plan project, we want to give you the high level aerial. We had gone into this in a granular detail over the last few months. We were looking specifically at the 30-acre tract of property just due north of where we're sitting and standing here today, and we had over 1,200 people respond to an electronic and paper-offered survey. We've pulled all the data and graphic, demographic details pertaining to this particular subject matter as well as the park itself, and just some very interesting highlights. Here, if you can see, if you grab it at any one of these particular locations, our demographics are very unique to Emerald Isle as we are unique in our environment and our area, but one of the items that was interesting to us is the median age of our constituency is just a little bit north of 57, which puts us approximately 20 years north of the North Carolina median age. And so we took that into consideration. We have a very strong disposable income and a bunch of other really interesting facts that are in that detailed report. So we took the demographic summary, matched it with all the requirements, the requests, and the concerns and feedback of the community, and we worked with our town staff as well as our engineers at Summit Engineering to come up with a drafted proposal. Extensive analysis was done on the site from environmental, vegetative, water quality, and we came through and brought forward to the community and the public their desires and, it's culminated through the 1,200 and nearly 40 result studies that were brought in. So the Phase 1 report stresses the number one and the highest demand that we saw in the feedback was maintaining the environmental integrity of the site, all 30 acres, as well as the greenery, the preservation, and the overall natural feel. So the Phase 1 first recommendation is to have an arborist's report completed or an inventory, if you will, of that area before any additional undertakings are had. Secondarily, we've talked through and worked through specifically trail updates. There is an existing trail system already at McLean Spell Park, and our staff has gone out from Parks and Recreation to do additional cleanup. There was some fallout after Hurricane Florence, and so we have gone through there and done some minor cleanup, but the arborist's report would help us identify if there's any sick or ill trees or any other overhanging limbs or branches that would cause potential for danger. In addition to that, we've talked about the addition of exercise stations, which would keep it natural and provide those that frequent that park additional exercise opportunities in a natural environment, and then also the importance of a water fountain. The water fountain would be for human consumption, but there's also a conversation based on the July 10th, 2018 board decision in regard to the dog park area of placing a dog park in that zone and also having water if a dog park goes forward for our four-legged family for friends. In addition to that would be the option to put in a picnic shelter, and you can see on this master plan overview, which would be the right-hand portion of the screen, it identifies where each of those Phase 1 locations, which would be very non-invasive to the environment and would enhance, would enhance the McLean Spell Park based on the feedback of the community. There's also Phase 2 options, which would allow for further enhancements, but many of those enhancements would be between Blue Herring and the McLean Spell Park, which would be an opportunity for us to refresh and update our restrooms, providing greater access for anyone that participates either at our tennis courts or the potential option for future pickleball courts, our playground area, and enhancements along that whole area here at Blue Herring. So there's additional opportunities and questions that we could answer at a future time, but with that being said, the recommended action and consideration today with the community would be to consider the Phase 1 plan options, which again is a high-level overview, would be first and foremost maintaining the integrity of the park with an arborist review and recommendations, the options for trail improvements, which would enhance what's currently existing. The only additions would be the consideration for exercise stations, the dog parks installation, and a picnic shelter for everyone to recreate and utilize in multiple weather scenarios. So that's where we stand today. If there's any questions that the board or the mayor may have, we'd be glad to answer from his staff, but that gives you the very high-level version of the last 12 months of intensified work brought to you through staff and our subcontracted engineers.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Board have any questions for Matt before we go into public hearing?
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I would potentially recommend we could leave up on the board on the electronic screens the overall design portion so that if someone is speaking to that, it would be referenced.
Works for me. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye. Public hearing is open.
We have several people signed up tonight to speak. The first is Peg Erway.
Again, everyone, the comments on this will still be to three minutes. If we would just be respectful of everybody's time behind you. I appreciate that.
I'm speaking about the proposed site for the dog park in the McLean Spell Park. I am 100% against the dog park being placed within this site. I feel a different piece of town property would be more welcoming than this park. In April of '17, a necessary site report was completed by Mike Shafley, an ecologist with the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program. Because the town was applying for money from the Clean Water Management Trust Fund to purchase the property, he recommended, quote, "All the natural area is recommended for protection with the strongest protection needed on the primary areas along the creek ditch from disturbance." To protect the water... ditch from disturbance to protect the water quality in Archer's Creek." The town is encouraged to use the land as a natural recreation area without facilities that would require removal of any intact maritime forest or wetlands, and has the potential for some rare species of vegetation known elsewhere in the Emerald Isle Bogbanks Maritime Forest, unquote. The elevation of McLean Spell Park is between 1 and 22 feet, and dog fencing is not natural. In February of '18, the seven-member EI Dog Park Development Committee was, quote, "Tasked with generating support, fundraising, considering locations, and recommending design features," unquote. In 2022, the town hired Summit Design, which developed and sent out the survey, which was poorly written but completed by over 1,200 citizens. The survey did not offer the option of no development. Based on the results of the survey, 35% of respondents indicated they wanted a dog park, though desired location for the dog park was not specified by respondents. General comments on the survey about the future development of the McLean Spell Park said, "Keep it green, keep the area natural." Then Summit developed the master plan. On July 13th of '22, 40 people attended a meeting here, and over 28 people, I mean, and over half, excuse me, on July 13th, 40 people attended the meeting here, and over half, 28, spoke with unanimous opposition to significant change to the existing McLean Spell Park. Residents have choices both in town and within a short distance to socialize their dogs. While there is some desire and need for new amenities, there is strong support for keeping the mature trees, walking trails, and shady forests of McLean Spell Park intact. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next on list, we have Annette Ruth.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Annette. I live at 315 Loblawi Street. My time's ticking. My time's ticking. It's a done deal. I feel defeated in the decision. Nothing we can do. These are comments that EI residents have stated. These residents felt that their voices would not be heard tonight, so I'm speaking on their behalf as well as mine. I'm referring to the proposed dog park in the McLean Spell property. I'm not in favor of a dog park in a maritime forest. Building a dog park in a maritime forest is not in the best interest of this piece of property for previous stated reasons. It is unclear as to why the town continues to move forward with this project, with so many residents opposed to building anything in the McLean Spell property. The town or the Dog Park Committee has not demonstrated a proposal of how it will be managed, monitored, or policed. There are other alternative locations that were proposed and made available to the Dog Park Committee in 2018. I ask that you consider these alternative properties. The maritime forest is not the only choice. Emerald Isle gets one chance to save 30 acres. I would like to bring attention to the other amenities proposed during the November 22 Board Meeting, which included trail updates, exercise stations, water fountains, and picnic shelters in Phase 1. I'm in favor of these trail updates to include trail plans, tree identification to improve the walking and the education. Exercise stations. Will someone use them? Perhaps. Walking on the trails is considered active exercise, and adding a station to stop and do a pull-up, really, we might want to reconsider this. Picnic shelters. We have one near the tennis courts. I encourage you to update the existing shelters and the current shelter, as which the current shelter is rarely used. Phase 2, updating existing restrooms, much needed, and this should have been included in the Phase 1 and not Phase 2 for the reamping. Pickleball, top 10 growing sports globally. I encourage the town to consider two pickleball courts and improve the outdoor tennis courts and basketball courts as they are needed, much repair. Our existing amenities are being neglected. Before you consider spending money in the McLean Spell Park, the town needs to address the updates, a much-needed makeover for our community center, such as appropriate changing rooms that are more conducive for the children versus using the existing bathroom repairs, repair ceilings and walls in the gym. Update classrooms and exercise equipment. The classrooms are overcrowded in the summer months. The foot bridges in Live Oak, Loblawi-Holly Street need repairs as well as improving the ramps at the three-beach driving access. Can we take a better look at what we need and not what we want? Thank you for your time and hope that you continue to represent the voices of the residents of Emerald Isle.
And next we have Mark. I apologize, I cannot read the last name. Thank you.
Mark Kahuna. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, everybody. I am perhaps your reluctant speaker for tonight. I was voluntold that I would be speaking when I came in, so. For the seven years that I've lived here, six of those, I've been the acting president for the Ocean Forest Property Neighbors Association, which borders the maritime forest. I was at the last meeting and heard the plans for Phase 1 and Phase 2, so I am familiar with what's happening. I guess Annette has some good points. I would say just from my observations, will I use, will people use a dog park in the maritime forest?
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Will they use water fountains in the maritime forest? I mean, I won't, but perhaps. Perhaps they will. Will they use exercise stations? Will there be a demand for exercise stations in maritime forest? Perhaps. But I know that we've got beach access points, a community center, foot bridges across Loblawi Live Oak and some others, the tennis courts, the restrooms in McLean Spell Park. They're in dire need. I mean, there, I don't know if you guys have walked through these facilities lately. They really need to be updated, maintained. Some of them are in horrible condition. And so before we consider another host of amenities that are going to require more maintenance going forward, perhaps we should look at maintaining the ones that we've got and sort of making them world-class facilities for, not just for residents, but for visitors. That's my observation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Next, we have Eric Berger.
Thank you that I have the opportunity to speak in front of all of y'all, and I guess I represent the minority from what I've just heard. So in terms of my age, I mean, I just want to say I'm completely opposed to a dog park in, you know, in our beautiful maritime forest. I can say as a user, I use this park four times a week, if not five days a week. I have two little girls. I've got a two-year-old and a five-year-old about to be three. And we use it all the time, and one of our favorite things is we wake up in the morning, we go into the park, and we see deer. Just be quiet for just one second. What do you hear? Nothing. You hear birds. You see deer. You see leaves falling. You don't hear barking, and I don't know, it just, for me, it feels so wrong to put a fence in, and I mean, sorry, that fence is ugly. If we just look at aesthetics, and I'm trying to be professional, that does not look nice in our beautiful maritime forest. It just doesn't. Just doesn't. And, you know, a canopy, yeah, it's nice to have, but we have a natural canopy of trees that protect us from rain. And if it rains, put on a raincoat. What else do we need? And, you know, a water fountain, yeah, okay, a water fountain. Bring a bottle of water. Who drinks groundwater anymore? Nobody does. Just doesn't make sense. So from my perspective, I'm 42, I have two young kids, we use the park almost every day. Like, it just would be a tragedy to have a dog park in there. Of course, yeah, you bring a canopy, but then you have people bringing food. There's food laying around, then you have animals in there, you have like varmints in there. Just leave it natural, leave it how it is. I think people have spoken out. You're going to hear more people tonight that speak for it, like, why change it? And like Mark said, we've got enough stuff around here that needs to be fixed up. So fix that stuff first. My kids use the playground all the time, right over here, Caddy Corner. There's some, it's rusting out, there's things breaking there. Fix those things first. Fix the gym. Get people into the community center again. Leave the park alone, please, guys. Consider my, yeah, talk tonight. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Jane Belt.
John, sorry. I'm not reading him yet. Writing well tonight, apparently.
It's a pleasure to address the town leaders tonight. My name is John Beltie, and my wife and I have lived down Loblawi Street for a little over the five years now, and have made many walks through McLean Spell Park, and it's a beautiful piece of property, and I'm just here to go on record as opposing the dog park there. It's great as it is, that piece of property. I think if we're going to make investments there as a town, we should be looking at finding ways to enhance its character as a maritime forest, and also maybe some restoration work in Archer's Creek. Otherwise, I would say you're doing this community the most good by just enhancing their opportunity to enjoy that piece of property, just as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belt. Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Ginger Miller.
I appreciate and commend the town of Emerald Isle for the foresight to purchase a dwindling natural resource, our maritime forest, which is now McLean Spell Park. The support of all the commissioners at a recent meeting to maintain the integrity of the park without any development recommended was greatly appreciated and supported by the Emerald Isle community. I was therefore perplexed when plans for park development inclusive of a dog park were presented at the November Commissioners' Meeting. A dog park presents a significant intrusion into the maritime forest. I hope that you do not proceed with plans to install a dog park there, but if you do, I think there are some things you need to consider. What personnel is going to ensure that dogs using the proposed park have been properly vaccinated to prevent the spread of disease to the animals using the park and the forest wildlife? What personnel is going to make sure dog feces are collected to prevent drainage into the water table? Please don't assume that all dog owners will pick up after their dogs. If you take time to walk the previously opened trails, you will quickly notice that many people do not pick up after their dogs. What personnel is going to be available to assist if a dogfight breaks out and then owners get into an altercation over said dogfight? What is the town's liability if a dog or their owner is injured either by another dog, an owner in a fight over dogs, or wildlife in the park? I love my dog Buck, and until the trails were closed due to the inundation of a well in the forest, we enjoyed our walks there. He doesn't need a dog park to enjoy the maritime forest. Please give our town and future citizens the best Christmas gift ever, and maintain the wonderful maritime forest in its natural state as previously supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Thank you, Ginger.
Next, we have Sunny Robbins.
Hello, I'm Sunny Robbins. I'd like to thank you for all you do do for this town. I'm here to oppose the park because, number one, I think the maritime forest is a great place. I've walked through it, and like the town manager was saying earlier, there, some cleanup needed to be done because there was a lot of logs and stuff laying around and stuff like that. But the biggest thing I think that bothers me about it is knowing, when you create a place like this, and the teenagers and things that you'll have hanging out there in the evenings, let alone possibly criminals, are we making a place that's going to be conducive to crime? And the other thing is, how is grass going to grow by there? I mean, if you, if you've got a dog park, it's going to be a big sandbox unless you constantly put sod down, because it's just not going to grow by there. And then you're going to have the runoff, like Ginger will say. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Judy Bliss.
My name is Judy Bliss, and I live on Live Oak. The maritime forest that you're talking of developing is in my backyard. One of the problems that I have, I have a very small dog. I don't have to take her into the forest for her to enjoy this beauty. She enjoys it from our backyard. But on time and time again, there are animals that are being pushed out of the forest into my backyard because I choose not to fence it in. I want to maintain the integrity and the beauty of that land. And the things that are pushing those animals into my yard, which I love to look at, are dogs that are in that back forest, not on a leash. They're not being picked up after. Their feces are everywhere. When we go to walk in the forest with our dogs, they're not maintaining any of our trails. They're using them with their dogs. The minute they get to that trail, they let their dogs off-leash, and the dogs run, and they run, and they push the other wildlife out of the forest. I don't want to see a dog park back there because I know in order to get to that dog park, which I agree with what they said previously, it is not attractive. It's not going to grow grass. It's not going to be a welcome sight for any visitors. I would like to see, I would like to see you not allow those dog owners to come into the park, let their dogs off-leash, and let them run to the dog park. It's going to create havoc. It's going to create dogfights. It's going to create, as Ginger stated earlier, it's going to create adults who disagree with one another over the behavior of the dogs. And we don't have the resources in this town to maintain that dog park. We don't have the money, I don't believe, unless you can tell me otherwise, to have someone staffing that area to make sure that these things don't happen. I would really like to see you oppose that dog park, vote it down. Please take care of the other resources that we have in our community. Our community center needs to be taken care of. Our community center is so rundown, the weight room, the bathrooms, there are so many things we can invest our money in, so many things that could take place over putting in a dog park that's not going to be utilized by the good majority of our community. I really, really encourage you to reconsider this. Take some of those suggestions that you had off of Phase 2, move those up into Phase 1. Take care of our foot bridges. Take care of our parks. Take care of our streets that are in desperate need of repair. Invest our money wisely. We, as the taxpayers, deserve that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Carol Peoples. I live at 401 Hickory Street. I'm a full-time resident. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and also, again, just tell you how much I appreciate. I'm sure a lot of hard work and advocacy went into the purchase of that property, and it is greatly appreciated. But I'm concerned, the maritime forest, which once covered much of the island, has all but disappeared, and we know that this park is one of the last remnants. It makes our town so special, and I think it's really a selling point for our town when visitors can come. I really think it should be protected in its entirety. The forest contains an amazing diversity of native plants, and just to give a partial list, we have laurel and live oaks, pig nut hickories, American olives, Carolina laurel cherries, American and Yopon hollies. cherries, American and Yopon hollies, dogwoods, eastern red cedars, swamp bays, witch hazel, wax myrtles, American beauty berries, high bush blueberry, partridge berry, little blue stem, and spotted touchmen knots. And y'all, that's just a partial list. I mean, it is a treasure. So my concerns about the park, the dog park being placed on this property, some of these have been touched on, but I am concerned about the urine and feces accrual, and who is going to enforce having pet owners pick that up? Is there gonna be a monitor? Is there a town employee that's gonna have to clean up that feces on a regular basis? Right now, what I've observed, most of the time, is people have their dogs on leash, and there's very little noise or disturbance. But I think when you have a park, though it's fenced in, groups of running and barking dogs, I think are gonna have such a, a greater negative impact on the wildlife than what's happening now, which is people just walking through quietly. And we know that when coyotes and raccoons and snakes move into residential areas, it usually does not end well for them. And I think that, having spent time in the park myself, I know that there's mosquitoes there. So when dog park users are bothered by mosquitoes, you know, is the town gonna spray? And if that's the case, you end up killing some mosquitoes, but a lot of other insects, like our native bees, moths, and butterflies, are impacted. And these insects are really vital, vital pollinators, and also the base of food webs that support our wildlife. We've heard that trees won't be removed, but I am wondering how all the fencing and building materials will be transported in and out? Replacement of removed trees sounds good, but it takes a lot of years to grow a tree of any size. And then, I know that the plan was to remove, or keep the mature trees in the dog park, so I'm assuming removal of small trees, shrubs, vines. And when that grows back, how is that gonna be managed? I just would be concerned if it's managed with herbicides. So, and then also, I just wondered about the other sites that were considered, how, why were they ruled out? And were citizens ever surveyed about preference for a site? So I'm a dog lover, I know my time's up. You've probably seen me walk in my dog Debbie Reynolds, but, you know, I've volunteered many hours at a humane society. I think a well-managed dog park can be a great asset, but I just don't think it belongs in this small remaining piece of maritime forest.
As I said, I'm not used to this. I think you need to leave it alone. Bill McLean and George Spell would roll over in their grave if any was gonna be a dog park. Leave it alone. It's beautiful. It's a place that you can walk. And I tell you, I've dealt with dogs, and I'm 47 years at the Holiday Travel Park. They use the bathroom. It's a fact. And the people don't clean up. I've got pictures in my phone. My daughter got so sick of me sending pictures because every time I'd pick up trash, we'd be picking up dog feces. And they go, they go tinkle, whether you like it or not, they go tinkle. But leave it alone. And you've heard the people, they've spoken, and people are opposed to it. I don't usually come to meetings like this because I've been where you're at, but I tell you, you need to leave it alone.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Ron.
Joy Brownlow, 7506, Sound Drive. I would first like to thank the town of Commissioners for purchasing the McLean Spell Park. What an incredible benefit to our town, its citizens, our visitors, and our wildlife. My request this evening is the same as it has been this year and in all of the previous years, which is to request that the McLean Spell Park be left in its natural state and to not have any of it altered, including but not limited to the dog parks. Almost all year round, I walk through the park twice a day with bags and leashes with my two dogs. It is beautiful, peaceful, shady, and I do not have to worry about car traffic. I also walk my grandson through this beautiful park for which I'm very, very thankful. My request is in no way meant to be inconsiderate towards dogs. I have owned dogs my entire life, including now. In my youth, I was an avid forager, and as an adult, I was a 4H volunteer here in Emerald Isle when we had a club that my children were in when they were growing up on the island. McLean Spell Park is pristine, beautiful, and special as it sits now, and it is teeming with wildlife. Several times a week, I see deer in their natural habitat. It seems that fencing within the forest would be very detrimental to the deer who could get confused, have anxiety, try to climb the fencing, and become injured. Before the park was purchased, the town of Emerald Isle paid for the Shafley report to be done, which several people have referenced this evening. This report clearly indicated the importance and benefits of leaving the park in its natural state with no development. This previous summer this year, a workshop was held here in this same room. Summit was present, as was our Parks and Rec Leader and two Commissioners. The meeting was wonderful. I believe around 28 people spoke, many of who had tears due to the fact that they loved the park so much. After this meeting, I felt so relieved because I thought the park would be left alone due to the unanimous responses. Summit even said it was one of the most attended workshops they had ever seen. That being said, I was very surprised to see a plan come through with dog parks in the forest after unanimous voices at the workshop requesting respectfully that it be left alone. If we do proceed with dog parks, could the Commissioners please consider putting dog parks at multiple other locations, such as behind the police station, the boat ramp park, Ocean Oaks Park, and the visitor's center? These locations have land that is already cut and would only require fencing. The other benefit to alternate locations is that they would be easier and quicker to access, especially for those who may need closer access to parking areas and restrooms. As a Commissioner, you will be leaving a legacy in Emerald Isle. In my most humble opinion, preservation of this incredible maritime forest would be the most special gift and legacy that you could leave.
Thank you, Joy.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trevor Brownlow, and I own property at 315 Live Oak Street. I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude for the town's acquisition of McLean Spell Park. To be sure, this pristine maritime forest and wetland area is an incredible gift that current and future generations can enjoy both recreationally and educationally. As a lifelong resident of this town and being among the third generation of family members to live here, I can say with certainty that the island's natural resources are what keep me here. I walk through McLean Spell Park practically daily, and I think it's perfect in its natural state, and my three-year-old nephew certainly agrees. While I think most elements in the summit design firm's proposal are fairly benign, there are better locations for a dog park than this maritime forest preserve, where deer and other wildlife can roam free of chain link fencing. It's also worth noting this park's ecological significance. A 2013 research article states, "Maritime forests on coastal barrier islands like ours, which provide both ecological and economic benefits to the communities living in and around them, are some of the most endangered ecosystems in the world," end quote. Okay? There are other locations for a dog park, but there are no other locations we can choose for a maritime forest. It is my understanding that the Dog Park Committee had a choice of five town-owned properties, and on July 10th, 2018, announced its choice of location before the board, the location in McLean Spell Park, as reported by the Jacksonville Daily News and WITN. But a decision that big warrants the opportunity for public input. Unfortunately, we now have the town survey and two unanimous workshops led by Summit that provide our answer. The overwhelming majority of residents want this particular site to remain in its natural state. To ensure this park is stewarded in a way that is consistent with the clear public sentiment, I would ask that the original dog park location choices be reconsidered. You've got the corner of Seagull Drive and Emerald Drive, you've got between the police station and the tennis courts, and you've got down by the boat ramp where Senator Gene Preston Memorial Park is. Okay? So we've got alternatives if the folks decide to go with a dog park. When the town brought in Michael Shafley, the state's ecologist, to get those hundreds of thousands of dollars of grant money for this park, he wrote, "The most significant feature of the site is the maritime forest. At 23 acres, it is a small example, but it is one of the last few remnants of extensive forest that once covered the interior of Emerald Isle, and it is one of the better remnants in this region of the coast. Let's make the decision tonight to keep this ecological rarity unspoiled and undeveloped by relocating the dog park." Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Brownlow.
Hi, so I am Wendy Rivera, and I am the chairman of the board of the dog park. And I truly feel like I have grown into a den of wolves, except that is what I'm comfortable with. So I am here to address you on behalf of all the people. I'm also the CEO and founder of Muddigan's on Emerald Isle, and I'm here to speak on behalf of what is apparently the minority, but in my circle, in my world, the majority voice of people who come in daily to the store, who I encounter through rescues, who are looking for a place to exercise their dogs, to, to be with them. So, and I'm gonna address to you why we need a dog park. While I believe that environmentally the impact should be maintained low, I believe that it can be done. And at the time that we looked at the different locations, the other locations were deemed not workable, and, and that was why McLean Spell Park was chosen. According to the American Pet Product Association survey conducted in 2021, 2022, 70% of U.S. households have pets. The average number of dogs per household is 1.6. According to vacationhomerents.com, over 26% of vacation homes in Emerald Isle are pet-friendly. So a service like this will not only service our residents, but our visitors, who are the lifeblood of this community. Unlike when I grew up, and a point I wanna make, I was a pet owner. We are now pet parents. I understand the concern, and I'm gonna address one specifically, which is the feces. That seems to be a dominant threat in this. Conscientious pet parents are gonna pick up their dog's feces wherever they are, whether it's in a dog park or walking on a trail or on the beach strand. Pet parents who are not conscientious are gonna leave it there, and the worst place to find it is on the beach strand or on the trail, not in a dog park where you expect to find other dogs. High-energy dogs need a place to exercise, which mitigates behavioral issues much like human children at a playground. A dog park in easy-to-reach centralized location such as McLean Spell Park will make EI more desirable. And while some are resistant to change, the fact that dogs are not considered family members will continue and is unlikely to change, especially with couples who are opting to have pets instead of human children. Ultimately, we have to decide, are we a family-friendly town or not? I'd like to see us remain what attracted me to the island, a place where my whole family, including those with paws, can call home.
Thank you, Wendy.
Anthony Benetti, Muddigan's. All I wanna say is, that is one ugly fence, chain link fence. All right, while I agree with a lot of you guys' concerns, so, okay, there's no dog park. Are you gonna limit people that walk their dogs, where there's, now you're not encouraging to pick it up? Dogs on, not on leash? There's no place they should go? Then let them on the beach. So I come to the beach, and I step and poop. That's not too friendly. At least that park can be contained. Now, in the surrounding area, we've got successful dog parks. Look at Swansboro, Midway Park, Surf City, Atlantic Beach, several places here. Has the town or anybody even gone there, talked with the officials? How are they operating it? Let's not kill something because we don't have the full story. Feces don't produce mosquitoes. Standing water has mosquitoes, such as those wetlands. Enforcement. This dog park is not gonna be a free-for-all. Crime, so you have hours, just like every place else. So you pay to use. You have residents, you have seniors, just different discounts. You have visitors come, they can get a pass. Yes, the upfront cost is gonna be a little bit, so, but you give them a swipe card. You know who's there. Oh, oh my God. I apologize. There's one ugly fence. It can be made friendly to the environment. So you use, just like you have a cattle ranch, you have made out of wood, put some fencing in there, you're gonna have an area for big dogs, an area for small dogs. As far as going into the water system, look, you have it, whether you have it here or at the beach, it's still going down. Our water supply is piped in, so it's not affecting our thing, and by the time it gets done, it is fertilized, okay? If you're not gonna have someplace for some people to let off some steam, well, then you're gonna have it on the beach or any other trails. Enforcement is by the people that are using it. I am not a dog owner, I'm a dog parent, okay? Like Sidementer said, you know, dogs are in our family. It is also a place where you can have socializing. Average age is 57. Let's face it, we retired, it's nice to be able to meet other people, okay? Now, what costs about the money? Fundraisers were held by different people, including the city. Where's that money? How much is being collected? If the dog park is not built, what are the plans for that money? You have names of people that donated. Is this gonna go to something else? So that is a valid question I would like to have an answer for. Status of money collected, and what is the plan for that money? Appreciate your, your time, and I believe that this issue should be tabled until further research is done and not have a haphazard on a motion. While I understand the opposition, I think that we should do some further studies. It's not like we're breaking down tomorrow. We're not gonna break down tomorrow. So let's look at what other municipalities has done and educate ourselves a little bit better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
It's hard being a minority.
Tony Browder, 7515, Sound Drive. After, before these two young people stood up here and spoke for the dog park, or for a dog park, as the first two people at any of the public meetings, and I've been to every one of them, that have spoke for the dog park in Emerald Isle. I don't think any of the people that are here that have spoken against it here are against dog parks. They're against dog parks in this maritime forest. Now, get back to my points. I've noticed since the Bog Banks drilling has started that the wildlife has somewhat diminished around the house. I don't see the deer running through the yard like I used to as much, quite as much anyway. A couple of engineering-type points to make. The master plan shows a water line from that new well site following the path around to the dog park. That's not gonna be potable water. They're not gonna bring potable water out of the ground, and they can't treat it there. They'll have to ship it off-site and treat it, and then bring it back to have potable water in the park. I don't think that's an appropriate use of erosion and all that other stuff. I think another big factor is, is that the, those exercise stations, I think they won't be used. I would much rather prefer to see educational placards or something that would teach kids about the wildlife and the benefits of the forest and the preservation thereof. The other thing that I noticed on that master plan, when I looked at it closely from an engineering perspective, was that they have it located on a knoll where, with about 26 feet of drop-off on either direction, one to the Archer's Creek and one to a wetland hole on the north side, which is inevitably gonna cause degradation of the wetlands. The other thing I have to say about that thing is that that big yellow line is called a development area, and as somebody that deals with stuff and regulations all the time... time, managers and everybody else come and go, and if that line stays on there as a development area, that potentially gives somebody in the future a green light to say, well, we can do it. We can do whatever we want. I think it needs to be removed. Also, the pickleball court it shows on the last slide, which is at the confluence of those trails, I think that's planned to be put across the creek. I think it needs to be moved from the park area. And just in my summary, I think that a maritime forest and a dog park and these exercise stations are just a bad idea from the standpoint of what the value of the property that we have, and we have the opportunity to do something that just isn't done very often, and we're already not protecting our woodlands and our trees and stuff on the island, and if we don't watch it, we're going to disappear. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Paige Taylor Ward, and I live at...
Paige, can you get that mic for the folks online?
Hi, my name is Paige Taylor Ward, and I live at 326 Live Oak Street. And I am 100% opposed to the dog park in the maritime forest. You know what's grosser than picking up dog poop? Stepping in it. And what's grosser than that is swimming in it, fishing from it, drinking water that has dog poop in it, and seriously. Pet waste left on the ground, especially near streets and sidewalks, get washed into storm drains and drainage ditches. It flows to our local waterways without being treated. Bacteria, parasites, and viruses found in the pet waste can be harmful to our water quality and to our human health. It's not being a good steward to put a dog park in the middle of the maritime forest. There are other locations for this dog park. I think the best one is going to be right here at the police department. I think people will have a different mindset if it's by the police department. People don't pick up the pet waste now. All you have to do is walk through the forest. You walk on Live Oak Street. Mr. Finch, there's plenty of piles right there by your house and mine as well. It doesn't get picked up. The people that use the park now don't put their dogs on a leash. I have a 100-pound Doberman. I have to run off the park trail because people let their dogs run not on a leash. I've been attacked 13 times by dogs, most of them on my street, some of them from the same household, because they don't pay attention. This is not being a good steward. I'd be interested to know how many citations have been issued by the police department for not picking up dog poop. I'd say it was zero. There's no enforcement. It just didn't. So I don't understand why you're trying to ramrod a dog park in our maritime forest. It's beautiful, and it needs to be left alone. The pickleball court, we currently now have tennis courts that double as the pickleball. I don't see anybody using them. They're all in disrepair. We need to spend this money better and fix up what we have. We have 30 acres, and it's not 30 acres. We've got a well in there now. That's enough damage. We'll never be able to undo all of it. So the cost is not in building the facility, it's the maintenance. We already have a small staff that is taxed. Who's going to do it? No one, just like the enforcement and with our vegetation, no one. So no dog park in the forest.
Yeah, it's me again.
Tonight, I'll be speaking not just as a resident of Emerald Isle, but I'm going to pull the veterinarian card. And I'd like to make the town and the commissioners aware that if you choose to place a dog park in the maritime forest, it actually would be contradictory to recommendations and suggested guidelines made to aid in the prevention and control of parasites and infectious diseases in dog parks. And I'm citing research by researchers at Ohio State's College of Veterinary Medicine and articles published in the American Veterinary Medical Association's magazine. These are a few of the guidelines. Keeping rodents and other wildlife out of areas where dogs will be present. Keeping dogs out of areas most likely to have larger numbers of ticks and fleas. Keeping dogs out of areas with standing water. And having a dog park in an area where parks and recreation staff can easily keep the area clean, vegetation easily managed, and where staff can eliminate areas of standing water, which can harbor these parasites and infectious diseases. Other important aspects that should be considered include that the site be relatively flat, and I think Mr. Browder said something about that, and not be heavily shaded so as to allow the ground to dry quickly. The bottom line is, a dog park in this location would actually be an increased health risk for those pets using it. A dog park in the forest, in my opinion, is a poor choice. When looking at locations for dog parks, I think the town should consider the ability and the logistics involved to successfully treat and disinfect the dog park area should we have a disease problem. This would be a difficult task in the setting of our maritime forest. Thank you.
Mr. Walling.
Walling. Richard I.
Good evening, Rick.
Hi, my name is Rick Walling, 7509 Sound Drive. I am officially going to be unopposed. I don't want the park. Couple of different reasons. Jason, you know my dog buddy. He's one big, strong dog. I can't walk him in the park right now. Why? Because too many people let their dogs run. I own one of the access points off a sound drive into the park. How many times people let their dogs loose there? I have to go outside, chief, get my dog and bring my dog back into the house. One of these days, there's going to be a bruhah there, okay? My dog isn't a fenced yard, but people, they just don't care. The same thing. Occasionally, if I walk through the park myself to go play pickleball, you got to watch out for all the stuff that's laying on the ground, which, you know, it's a shame. I'd like to see the funds, also, which many person, people have expressed, put the money's back into capital improvements on existing that we have, okay? And also, I'm quite sure we could find another spot to have a park. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Tammy Cooper. It's my first time here. I live on Bog Sound Drive, and I'm just here to support fixing what we already have, too. Because I do play pickleball on a regular basis. We go down there every Saturday morning. Some go Sunday morning, and then the others Sunday night. But what I want to do is see if we can fix what we have and then paint the pickleball lines a different color on there, and then also maybe when they redo the inside, if we could do lines in the gym so that pickleball could be an option in there sometimes, too. And so, and then I also had some people on Hurst Drive that wanted to know if they could have some more golf cart parks. So they're thinking more, spend money on that kind of thing instead of working on this so much. And so, anyway, and I'm opposed to the dog park, too. I'm sorry. Not there, you know what I'm saying? But anyways, I think that's it, just painting the lines, giving an inside option. Because of all the bus that play here on Saturday morning, every Saturday morning, we've gone and got passes. Now, we're going to be playing in Moorhead on Saturday mornings, and we're not playing there for free. We're all paying $6 a head to play there, and that could be money that's going here. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Any more public comment? Okay. All right. If there are no more comments or questions from the public to the board? Yes, sir.
I'm not on the list, but I have one quick thing.
Yes, sir.
My name is Peter Carey.
If you would, not to cut you off, but if you would, to the microphone so that people online can hear you, please, sir.
Just real quick, one point that I have heard made. My name is Peter Carey. I live at Kokina Drive. And there's one point that hasn't been heard was the wildlife as part of that ecosystem, and how that's going to be impeded by having a fenced in area that it has to navigate around or be hurt. Like, we have deer, we have raccoons, we have possums, we have rabbits. But the thing that bothers me is you walk down the street, and sometimes a deer will come up to my yard and it'll have a broken leg. And I'm just imagining that this barrier is going to be a good source for animal life to be hurt or, yeah, hurt in some way. And that's one of my points, is the wildlife should be considered, too, by having a barrier put in a natural ecosystem like this to impede their motion, because they want to escape from people, and they want to come back when people are away, and this is going to be impeding to them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from our public? Yes. Hi, Lori.
Hey. Lori Ahuna. Where do I live? 320 Lob Lolly. One thing that hasn't been brought up that I just found out from emailing with Laura Rochford last week is the money that is currently in the dog park fund is a little bit more than $60,000 right now. And I was under the impression that most of that money had been privately raised, but she confirmed that only $15,000 of that was actually privately funded, and the rest is either a town match, or obviously, that's more than match. So if this doesn't go through, I would suggest give the money back to the dog park committee and let them go wherever they need to go, and let's put the money back in the general fund or fund some capital improvements for our community center. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. The gentleman on the corner, you had your hand up? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Kent Van Herzenberg. We actually live in Point Bog, which is on the other side. But when we visit this area and try to walk through the park, and one thing that has not been addressed is there's not parking. There's not the ability to have more people into the park area to, like, have a dog park. You're going to have a lot of people coming in with dogs, with cars. I don't know where they're going to park. They're going to intrude on the residents of the area. And the times that we have walked through the park, there are dogs, not on leashes. Definitely, the habitat and the animals that are in the park, that is definitely affecting them. But, you know, one thing that's not been addressed is where is everybody going to park when they come to enjoy this area? And honestly, it is a great area to walk and enjoy, and, you know, a dog park, I'm not going to say where, but there's plenty of areas with much more sunlight, much more clearance, and an area that is more habitable to the, for, you know, the dog residents. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. McGeezy, I think you have another question. Did you have questions, sir?
Just one comment, I guess. If $15,000 was raised by private owners, I would like to see that not commingled in the general fund and held. So if this doesn't go through, because, I mean, there are a lot of valid concerns, but why not then? You're still going to have dog feces by walk-in.
I would like to see that the $15,000 or more money not commingled into the general fund, but put in a special fund for future dog park. But the feces are still going to be there. So then, an ordinance needs to be made that no dogs in the park, or enforce the leash laws. Because enforcement is the whole thing and public education, because if you're still going to allow people to take their dogs, then the issue is still at hand. It's not just the dog park, it is dogs in general. So then, the opportunity is here that you make an ordinance that no animals in the park, or enforce the leash laws with stiff penalties. But unless you're going to enforce the leash laws and not picking up the poop every place else, then it's a mute point. Thank you very much for letting me speak again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the public to the board? If that's it, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye. Public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up now to the board for discussion. Anyone can feel free to start.
Just to comment, I don't have a dog in this fight. Don't want a dog. What I'm hearing is, the majority of what I have heard is not necessarily against a dog park, but against a dog park in the maritime forest. The final comment that I'll make, if another location was selected, the people in that area are going to be sitting in the same seats y'all are sitting in. That's all I got to say about it.
I'd like to make a comment if I could, and I appreciate each and every one of you coming out tonight and expressing your opinions. And I have visited dog parks, numerous ones, all over the country since we ever first started talking about this. Personally, my wife and I own a cat, and I don't think we're going to be taking it to any dog park. But I think there is a need for a dog park, period. Now, this location, what I would suggest to this board, and this is my opinion coming from me personally, that we postpone making the decision tonight. We have a workshop coming up in January where we could sit and digest everything that's been said tonight, and then vote on this in the January next board meeting. And thank you for your comments, and that's just my suggestion for what it's worth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Steve, thanks for saying that. As an elected official, it's important to remove, you know, my own personal bias. I have a dog. He's 10 months old. He's a big, strong lab. He's 95 pounds. So as a dog parent, because I consider myself that, too, I make the conscious choice to not take him to those places, because I know he's big and he's a puppy, and it's not a safe place for him. He's an animal. He's also vaccinated, so that protects him and the rest of our household and other animals that he might come in contact with. But I love the idea of a dog park, and I appreciate all of the comments that everyone made, and I most certainly appreciate some of the ideas that have come forward. It can be hard to make these decisions based on comments, but coming to these meetings with solutions helps make things a little bit easier for us. Steve, I somewhat agree that maybe the dog park portion of the motion tonight be removed from the vote, because I think the other benign, as Trevor put it, enhancements make sense in the park. But maybe this decision, maybe we do put it back to the dog park committee to get back together. Since 2018, life has changed. Our community has certainly changed since then. So maybe it makes sense to delay that portion of phase one to sometime later after our January meeting.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Commissioner Vogel.
I'm used to going laughing.
I think we started this in 2018 or 19, when we started talking about the dog park, and we started deciding what we were going to do, how we were going to go about doing it and stuff. It was interesting. I knew nothing about a dog park. As most of you know, I travel around the United States with my primary job, and so I started visiting a lot of dog parks and stuff. And I go to a lot of places, and I see a lot, a lot of stuff. And from what I've noticed with dog parks all through the United States that I've seen, they're kept clean. The dog people that do dog parks, they take care of the dog park because they're respectful. You know, they love their animals and stuff. And I've seen that, and I've seen it in a lot of places, not one place, two places, but, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 places all the way around. There's a strong group of people here that don't want a dog park as far as in the marine... in the marine, the marine area, and I agree what you're saying, and I'm listening to you, and I'm understanding what you're trying to come, come across. I think there needs to be a dog park somewhere in Emerald Isle, and, and I appreciate, like I said, what you came out and spoke to, and the passion you got, and how we love Emerald Isle, and we all love it, and we want to do the right thing. But when we voted on this back in 2018 or 2019, and we voted to do a dog park, we challenged this group of volunteers that spoke up, that have come on the commission to raise funds for it, they went out and raised funds for it. I'm not sure the money, if it's 15,000 or 60,000, I'm not sure how much it's worth. But the, the part that, the part that we need to do is we need to decide as a, as a group here, as a citizens here, where we want to put this dog park. I think there's going, there needs to be one in Emerald Isle, because a lot of people spoke up, they want one, but where does it need to go is the question. And I'd like to hear more from, from Jim down there and listen a little bit more of what's going on and stuff, but that's kind of where I'm at right now, you know, on this thing.
Well, I'll tell you again, it don't matter where the dog park is.
Yeah.
Wherever you want to put it, you're going to have different people sitting in those chairs out there.
It's going to be a different group of people.
It's not a matter of wanting a dog park or not wanting a dog park. I didn't interrupt you.
I got one, one at a time, please.
I'm done.
Thanks, sir. No, sir.
I will say that, I think there was a comment made about, Anthony, I think maybe you mentioned it, you know, was there research done on surrounding towns? And the town, the town staff did put together a nice packet for us tonight on the Swansboro Park and some other surrounding parks, and how they've handled it, and so thank you for that. I did want to say that there was a lot of preparation that went into this conversation tonight. Sorry.
You like going laughing. Got plenty of time. Breakfast buffet, doesn't open up for a couple more hours, we're fine. My turn?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for, to everybody for coming out. Greg, would you be, Greg back, back there still? Would you be so kind as to put that slide back up, Phase 1, Phase 2? I guess we're on a live feed out to Facebook land right now, but just put that slide back up for us. Phase 1, Phase 2. While Greg's working on that, I do appreciate all the, all the comments, and as you can imagine, we're all getting additional comments by phone or at the grocery store or whatnot, and there are still families that call back from 2017 and 2018, that in earnest, and politely back to them probably listening tonight, that we really want that home field or that multipurpose park. That still gets pitched to us, right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just sharing with you what desires of others are. I don't think this is the right place and time, certainly for that multipurpose park or that home field to a big growing demographic here in Emerald Isle, but I appreciate them contacting us. I appreciate you sharing your concerns about putting a, to me, it's more of a dog run than a dog park, putting a dog run and explain Spell Park. There's also folks that have called, very excited, just to focus in on the trail system from an education standpoint. I think you had mentioned, Trevor maybe had mentioned, folding in some technology to the trail system. And as I told everybody, and I've mentioned several times, what's most important to me at the top of the list is, one, certainly no bulldozing, we've been through that, but most important is satisfying these millions of dollars of grant funds and, and finding that balance to do what's right with the park. And I think we've decided that we can, not the attorney, but I, I think we achieve success with these million dollars in grants by marking the, the existing trails, not clearing anything, but those items I have discussed before, you've heard before, maybe folding in some of Trevor's ideas. That's incredibly important to me, I hope that's incredibly important to you, that we're able to do that and mark those trails and fold in some education. Greg, I brought you a Christmas present, and thanks, thanks for putting that slide Very briefly, and I'll go to the dog run. Oh, he took the slide now. So on the slide, the, I'll call it the education deck, slated for Phase 2, we're having a Phase 1 conversation tonight. This is that outdoor classroom, that's what I thought would have generated the most conversation. That's what I got most excited about. It, it wasn't on a survey, it wasn't on my list, it wasn't on anybody's list, and I had to call Candace and Summit and say, where did this come from when I read the report? And deep down in all of our discussions and all of our surveys, Summit and Candace are telling us, well, telling me when I called, well, the underlying theme that we're trying to accomplish is an education package in that park. And I just want that to be our future conversation, that's our future with our kids, that's our future, how we link and begin working with one of the universities in Morehead State, Trevor's Blue School, or the Superior Duke Place out there. But that's where we bring in education, not only for us, but for our kids, and able to talk about resiliency in the future. So I'll get off of Phase 2, but I was just excited about that platform, appreciate Candace and Summit putting that in, and that's a Phase 2 item. I'm going to go out on a big limb, and I'm going to make a motion, and I'll repeat it if you want me to. Can I do that, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So my motion is, I make a motion authorizing town staff to execute Fa, the following items in the Phase 1 of the Mc, dang, gone, McLean Spell Park Master Plan. Those items being, I'm just going off of Matt's memo, those items being, an arborist report, trail updates that we've been discussing, exercise stations, and a picnic shelter. The end. I was looking to see how it was worded in our notes, but the, the end. I'll repeat that for those listening. To authorize town staff to conduct the arborist report, do the trail updates as we've discussed, the exercise stations, and the picnic shelter. What I have not included, so there is clarity, I have not included a dog park, and I have not included a water fountain for people. Happy to repeat that to my colleagues, let them cipher on it, let the mayor cipher on it.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, you're making a motion authorizing town staff to execute Phase 1 of the McLean Spell Park Master Plan, including improvements to the existing trail system, an arborist report, exercise stations, and a picnic shelter, and to exclude a dog park and water fountains. Am I correct or incorrect?
The, the, arborist report, trail updates, that's with the updated signage and so forth, trail updates, exercise stations, and picnic shelter, that's where we take these 600 kids we deal with throughout the year to teach them what's going on and get them involved. But I didn't mean to get into all that, but those are the items, you want me to repeat them again?
That's good.
Yes, sir. Motion's on the floor. Yea or nay, or aye or nay, and show of hands, are all in favor, say aye. Motion is passed unanimously.
Well done, sir.
All right. How'd we do? Just curious, look, the mirrors on my truck were going to be gone when I went outside. Look, Ms. Wendy, Mayor's going to squash me, so I got to, look, thank you all to your committee, we're going to get one somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where, but we're in no hurry, we're going to work together, we all family, it's Christmas. But look, y'all have been at it for many years, you've raised a lot of money, and we, all of us, I'm sure, we thank you for that, and we'll find a place for a dog run, I promise.
It's my pleasure to serve.
Thank you, ma'am, for serving.
Before, before we move on to our next item, just a, a really quick thank you to everybody that's been here, whether you oppose a dog park, proponent of a dog park, like them somewhere else, don't like them anywhere else, I appreciate you all being here, I appreciate your passion, and I appreciate all the work that's been put in by town staff, everybody, our Board of Commissioners, Summit, everybody. It's, it's a lot of big choices to be made, a lot of hours have gone into this, so thank you to everybody. All right. Yes, sir.
If it's okay, I would like to clarify the factual opportunity regarding the funding, the specialized fund, and allow our finance director to address that, it will help clear up a lot of confusion.
Sure.
Just a final comment, because that was brought up, we, we do have those funds in a separate fund, and it is very, it's captured, those donations are captured, so we can reserve that and keep that completely separate. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, those won't be commingled.
Is that just a, is that just a fund that were raised publicly, or is that including any specific grants granted by whatever organization that was specified?
They get down.
The ones that we raised for the dog park.
By the public, by what of us? There's grants that were given specifically for dog parks.
From my knowledge, that could be a mistake, I think that has been a couple of years now, but I don't recall any specific grants from the.
Can I be checked, though?
Yep, absolutely.
Just we have these, and those were specific by somebody, they were stated in the dog park fund, that huge company.
So I can address that. So we have just north of $15,000 that was acquired, procured, and is donated, and is recorded. The matching funds were brought in, in part with local dollars that were generated. We had applied for general ARPA funds, and those ARPA funds were redirected and used for normalized procedures in the 2021 budget, and then we had those funds available, so the board had made a previous match to that. So we're currently sitting at approximately.
Yeah, the grand total is $60,000 total, so that's what's reserved for.
Current intentions, now, that can be shifted, but the thing that can't be shifted is the donations would either, and I believe this board will tell you, those donations would be allocated and used for their sole purpose, or would be returned to those original donors in the event that something happened. But I think you can see the sentiment in this room is Emerald Isle is behind the importance of placing a dog park, and those 15-plus thousand dollars that were raised would go in good faith to that exercised opportunity, would not be used for anything else. People should rest easy tonight knowing that.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Laura. All right, moving on, item number 12 would be our UDO presentation, comprehensive code updates, Town Planner Michelle Eitner. Excuse me.
I'm pleased to bring the board the finalized draft of what we're calling the Comprehensive Code Updates.
Mike for the people online, can they hear you? Sorry. Oh, they, okay, I didn't see that, sorry.
I'm at a PowerPoint as well. So within the Town of Emerald Isle Code of Ordinances, we've got 13 chapters and an appendix, and so we're affecting one of those chapters and Appendix A, the Unified Development Ordinance, so we're calling it Comprehensive Code Updates, so it is primarily the UDO that is being affected. I'll take the next slide. In the agenda packet for tonight, there are a lot of separate components, so I do want to identify them. Thank you. So the first page that I provided shows three blue PowerPoint slides, and that provides kind of a short version of what we're looking at, at the proposed items, as well as future amendments, and I'll have those later in my presentation. The next three pages are a play-by-play summary of the amendments. There is an item that is not provided in that summary of amendments dated the end of November. We have clarifying language that's been added in the first chapter of the UDO to ensure that general statute control of a conflict arises. This language was provided by our incoming town attorney, just to make sure that we've got compliance with 160D. So Section 1.7.3, Regarding State Federal Law, kind of covered that in general, but we do have that additional language now provided. It's not, it was provided in an additional addendum to the board's printed copies, but that's the version that's provided in the, in the PDF that was provided as part of the agenda packet. The next item is the Planning Board's Statement of Consistency Document. It's a more formal version of the memo that's previously provided along with amendments. It identifies the planning board and that they've considered the Camel Lane Use Plan in regard to these amendments, and notes the change that the planning board included in the amendments, and I'll identify that as well later. Then there's the 245-page UDO. This document is our current ordinance with changes in line, so it makes it appear a lot longer than it is, because it includes red, strike-through deleted text, as well as proposed blue underlined text. There's some sections that are green, which means they've been relocated elsewhere in the document, but that just depends on how I hit copy and paste when I moved it. So keep that in mind, that in general, red is dead and blue is new. The same color scheme applies to the Chapter 6 Building Regulations, which is a section of the ordinance that's still in place from when we had in-house inspections. The text amendment process is heavily guided by statute, but this slide shows a brief flow, flow chart. I just want to touch on one important item, then we can move on and return to the slide if we need it later in discussion. With regard to adopting text amendments, this latest decision rests with the hand of the elected officials. Y'all can adopt none, some, or all of the amendments, and you can change the proposed language for them as well. I'll note that substantive language changes will need to go back to the planning board for review and recommendation, as though they are new amendments, though denial of proposed amendments can move forward without having to go back to planning board. As you know from my three PowerPoint slide page, I've got plans for future amendments, so this is not going to be the last time we're bringing amendments for your consideration. There may be items discussed tonight or in the future that we want to add to that to-do And now for the amendments. I'm going to go through these six items. The first item is the bulk of the actual text changes in the comprehensive code updates, but does not propose many real policy changes. Relocating sections and clarifying procedures improves development approval processes for staff and the development community, and I hope to continue these technical amendments in the future. Item number two changes the number of voting seated members we have for Board of Adjustment. All seven members of the planning board will still serve as the Board of Adjustment, but two will serve as alternate members, so there are five seated Board of Adjustment members serving on each case. This allows for the four-fifths vote required by statute for variance approval to be followed exactly, and provides greater flexibility when there's conflicts of interest with board members. The third item notes the amendments that require stricter stormwater management plans for development. The current threshold for stormwater management plan is 1,000 or more square feet of impervious coverage. This is proposed to be cut in half to 500 square feet. This would allow for small projects by homeowners to continue to move forward, like a storage shed or a patio, without requiring a stormwater plan. We are also proposing that these stormwater management plans be provided by professional engineers or landscape architects, and that they certify prior to certificate of occupancy or completion of the project. This will ensure that the stormwater retention areas are adequately and appropriately designed and installed. This does require additional cost and time for contractors and developers to provide these plans for permitting and the certification at final inspection. But these stronger stormwater regulations are similar to what our sister beach towns require. The fourth item shows a proposed amendment for a 15-foot side setback for oceanfront homes regardless of plat date. A little bit of backstory on that. Currently, homes in the RMF and R2 zoning districts have a side setback that are based on a plat date. Old lots are recorded on or before June 11th, 1977, and have a 10-foot side setback, and new lots have. lots have been platted since then and have a 15-foot side setback. This amendment proposes to increase or maintain side setbacks as 15 feet for oceanfront lots in the R2, RMF, and MH zoning districts. These oceanfront lots are defined as adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean or inlet hazard area, which has a NCDQ identified area towards the point. Providing greater distance between these structures is going to help to increase the use shed between structures and reduce massing, but there are two other important reasons we'd like to call attention to. Identifying an area within an existing zoning district that's going to be subject to different regulations is allowed, as long as there are specific reasons for doing so. These two most important reasons for doing this are, one, when we need to access, when there's a need to access the ocean side of the structure, there are functionally no options to approach the structure across the dunes without disturbing them. And, two, high winds on the oceanfront lends to greater risk for structure fire to spread quickly, both to adjacent structures and also into the dune grass. Fire Chief Walker agreed that this increased separation between oceanfront homes provides additional protection and also provides better access to the ocean side of the structure for the firefighters to access with hose if needed. The manufactured homes, single-family and duplex homes that would be built in these three affected zoning districts are not subject to fire code requirements, so they don't have the same protection that commercial structures do, such as sprinkler systems or fire-rated walls. So this 15-foot side setback is only proposed in residential zoning districts. The fifth item that we're looking at removes parking garages as a use type, which results in a prohibition for parking deck structures. The UDO committee discussed this and determined that there's no zoning district in town that could appropriately accommodate additional vehicles and traffic that would come with a parking deck. The sixth item is similar to the first, in that we're making changes to remove conflicting provisions, but it's within a separate section of the Code of Ordinances, so we did want to call it out separately. These regulations are also provided within the UDO, so we removed them from Chapter 6 to reduce redundancy throughout town's requirements. I also, it's a bit small, but I just wanted to put this up so that we can kind of visualize and see what we're considering oceanfront. So it would be everything kind of west and down on the point, that's against the sandy beach strand, as well as all the ocean down. My to-do list is similarly lengthy, so we're going to be moving forward with several items in the future. So when I say we'll have more presentations in the future. So in my to-do list, we hope to further standardize and clarify these procedures, to ensure that the process is understandable for development community and that benchmarks are met by staff. We want to increase the number of graphics and the quality of graphics throughout the UDO to exemplify dimensional standards and rules of measurement. There's several types of standards that apply depending on the use or the zoning district or the permit, so we hope to arrange these in more a common area and expand on them as we need to. There's several outdated definitions that need to be brought up to current best practice. For example, mobile homes need to be identified as manufactured homes to meet state statutes. Signage is always a hot topic, so it's kind of pulled out as part of these later amendments. So we'll need to identify types, sizes, locations. This is another item where those graphics are going to be really helpful. The second-to-last one is going to be really important, as Emerald Isle continues to experience infill of the last few hundred vacant lots, as well as redevelopment of existing lots coming forward. We'll look at the natural area requirement and discuss what can be added to that, to ensure that buffering between a residence in the street and between residences themselves is provided. The last one is similar to the 15-foot side setback for oceanfront structures, but we hope to look further into whether there's a need to identify additional requirements to reduce massing of these and other large residential structures. In the state of North Carolina, we can't limit or require certain square footage for single-family residential homes, but additional setbacks or lot coverages can be leveraged for large structures. And then we have a list. I'm not going to go into all of these items, but this is more of my wish list rather than my to-do list, and we can always add any of these items that we like to the to-do list. So we've got a number of things. The UDO itself is an appendix in the Code of Ordinances, and typically you want to have that as a functional chapter of the code, so moving that, modernization of the business regulations, and additional shoreline stabilization and marine construction standards, increased types of landscaping requirement for larger projects, parking requirements for residential uses is a little outdated, and then looking at our floodplain certification requirements for projects. It's a lot of information. Is there any questions for me at this point?
Any questions from the board to Michelle? Yes, sir.
Thanks for making me proofread that package, just teasing on that, but behind-the-scenes banter. Jim, would you just proofread this next few hours?
Yeah, sure.
That was a couple of weeks ago. Anyway, my question is, had some nice calls, phone calls come in, when the package, Ms. Anna put the package out Friday afternoon. Would you, and I'm not sure of the answer exactly, but would you just share with everybody about what percent this is that's being presented tonight of the entire UDO? Certainly a lot more that's being worked on now, a lot more to come, but what percentage are we sharing with the public, and the rest is in the works? 30%? 40%?
Percentage of change?
Percentage of product completion. In other words, we're not 100% done with everything. Is that correct?
Yes. So this would be basically the first phase of amendments. I anticipate this is maybe one of two or three, but that really depends on where we want to move forward with some of those other items.
Sure. Just the point being, good phone calls and emails we probably have all received in regards to vegetation, and lots, and things of that nature, and all that is in the works, just not, has not come out the end of the sausage-making yet of the printer, but this is just the first batch I just wanted everybody to be aware of, and just not finished yet. But good work so far. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions from the board to Michelle? All right. This time, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any public speakers?
We have one signed up.
Tony Browder, 7515, Sound Drive. I've been looking forward to the amendment or this revision, because I've been very disappointed in the way that the ordinance has been solid so far in on lot grading and such, and a lot of specifics in the dunes and vegetation section 6.4, 6.4, I felt have not been followed. The intent of the rewriting was to clarify a bunch of stuff and make it easier to enforce. Problem I see with it is just not being enforced. There's lots of lots that are being, where the topographic uniqueness of the island is being ruined and leveled, and there's no semblance of its prior condition when the lot gets done. And it's very clear in the ordinance before, and the wording in 6.4 dunes hadn't changed any from the way I'm reading it. But, so it's mainly just the enforcement thing, and I would just implore and beg the board and the new planner, wherever she went. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think she wasn't listening.
That you do more on the enforcement side of things, because many lots on my street, et cetera, have been developed since I've been here, and they've basically been raped. I mean, it's, there's no other way to do it. There's no semblance of the way the topo was before, or the vegetation, and they might put a few trees back here, but it's just, we're going to end up with a sandbar that gets washed away in one of these big storms if we're not careful, so.
Thank you, Tony. Let's see. Carol, you had a?
Yeah, I think sign up is okay, my special.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Sure. Carol Peoples, 401 Hickory Street. I had not planned to speak about any of this, but I have been looking forward to seeing the amendments to the UDOs, because I share some of the concerns Mr. Browder has, that I see the topography of lots being changed, I see lots of native vegetation being removed, and I'm an advocate for native plants, because they do so much for us and for our environment. And what I'd like to just suggest is just something to think about in the planning. When we look at revegetating lots when trees are removed, when it's native vegetation that's removed, I'd love to see priority given to native vegetation going back in, because our native vegetation is really essential to supporting all of our insects, which I know people go, ooh, insects, but if you love birds, birds need caterpillars, native plants grow caterpillars. Caterpillars are not eating your crepe myrtle and growing into butterflies. It's more your native vegetation. So if that's something that we could just think about, when we look at residential, folks who've cleared, who need to add vegetation, adding native vegetation instead of things from other continents. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Any other questions from our public? Yes, I can see your hand, but I can't do either. Hey there.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Paxson McLean-Holz. I picked an excruciating meeting to attend. I thought we were just spanking Richard and saying goodbye. Surely didn't mean to walk in.
Little did you know, right?
So my address, one of my addresses is 6719 Ocean Drive, and I wonder how many owners you've heard from that have asked the question, are you circumventing state statute, which now refuses to allow municipality to say how many square feet can be in a certain zone by increasing the setback? I think this is an underhanded way to do it, just my opinion, because if somebody wants to build a house now, say on the oceanfront, and they are limited in their size by increasing the setback, when the state statutes clearly say you cannot do that, I think that's an underhanded thing to do. And you might not realize it, so that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Paxson. Thank you, folks. All right. Any others? All right. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearings.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearings now closed. All right. Item number 13 is the potential reappointment of bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee members. I spoke with Candace prior to the meeting, she didn't have any issues one way or the other with the potential reappointment, so I'll open it up to the board for discussion and potential reappointment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Like to make a motion to reappoint Ken Ambrose and Mike Taylor to term on the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, expires December 2024.
All right. Motion to appoint Ken Ambrose and Mike Taylor to term on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee that expires December 24 is on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number 14, be the potential reappointment of golf cart advisory committee members. Matt, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, sir. Same as the previous. They're in upstanding condition and intend to participate in meetings. We appreciate their volunteerism.
All right. Three potential reappointments there. I'll leave it up to the commissioners to open the motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to reappoint Debbie Parker, Jeanne Clark, and Jim Dubovick to the golf cart advisory committee for a two-year term that ends December 2024.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. All right. Item number 15 would be the golf cart parking improvements and recommendations from the golf cart advisory committee. Mr. Zach.
Thank you, mayor and board. We're going to go ahead and begin with our conversation here tonight to talk about the Emerald Isle Golf Cart Program. And what we have here to present this evening is your most recent due diligence and work produced by the Golf Cart Advisory Committee. I'd like to remind our residents and public that the Golf Cart Advisory Committee meets on the third Tuesday of each month, third Tuesday here in this room at 5:30 PM, and you are more than welcome to attend, as our meetings are always open to the public and engage in very good conversation. Tonight's topics we'd like to talk about and share with the public, the golf cart registration zones, which the island is broken down into three zones, will provide you with the most current year-to-date golf cart registration data, and then we will present the report that has been unanimously approved and recommended from the Golf Cart Advisory Committee for the enhancements and additions of parking spaces. First, there are three zones in Emerald Isle. You'll see on the color-coded map, Zone 1 on the west is the yellow zone. That Zone 1 incorporates Deerhorn Drive to the Point. Zone 2, identified in that light blue, is from Coast Guard Road to the Dogleg, and Zone 3 is 25th Street to the east end of the city limits, and those zones are defined as hard breaks. If you have a Town of Emerald Isle only-approved golf cart, which means it's not a licensed LSV or a state-issued low-speed vehicle, your zones are relinquished, so you can't actually access multiple zones. So if you reside in Zone 1, your cart activity is in Zone 1. If you reside in Zone 2, you're in Zone 2. And to complete the thought, if you reside in the eastern end of the island in the green zone, you are limited to those areas. Currently, drum roll, please, we went from just shy of 1,300 golf carts a bit over a year ago to 1,445 registered golf carts in calendar year 2022. Three years ago, we had approximately 62 golf cart parking spaces. With all the activity, work, and permit fees that have been paid for registration of golf carts, we have increased it number north of 110. We also have interactive online map. We have the maps available on Golf Cart Keychain, so when you get a safety keychain, you can scan that keychain. It gives you your safety rules and mapping. That's also on the golf cart rules that are affixed to each of those now 1,445 end users. We would like to thank them for their participation and support of the program, which also leads us into where are they going to park? So we understand that the print that's showing up on the screen is very small, but these are the four zones that we're going to talk about tonight, and we'll get into more granular detail with the engineering improved sites and the recommendations for the board to consider. Your first site is the Seagull Access. You'll see here at the Seagull Access, the engineer drawing an overlay to that current area. In the highlights and notes that you'll see on the screen, as well as in front of you in your hand, in your printed hard packet, Seagull and Ocean, which the recommendation is to repurpose a current roadway parking space that is gravel and nature on the north side of Ocean, which was at a dead end of an area on Ocean Drive near the corner of Seagull. The recommendation from the Golf Cart Advisory Committee was staff concurrence. When I say staff concurrence, you're utilizing not just my office, but it's the Parks and Recreation Team, the Public Works Team for Drainage and Stormwater Runoff, Police Department for Sites of Line, Safety, and Compliance, the Fire Department for Distance and Proximity to All Fire Apparatus, and the ability for Safety Service Equipment to be brought into these areas. So each of the four sites that we're going to show you tonight have been signed off by staff on preliminary review. For example, at Seagull, it would be the insulation of pervious concrete, allowing for improved drainage in that area, and the recommendation is for seven golf cart parking spaces with at least a minimum of one designated for handicap or limited use, and potentially two sites would be handicap-related, which allows the increased access for those with some mobility issues. If they are golf cart owners, then have a dedicated parking space. So what my plan here tonight was, is to give you the overall general view, and then we'll take time on each of these particular sites. So now that's the recommendation, is repurposing a vehicular parking space, similar to what we did on the eastern portion of the island two years ago, and utilize we did on the eastern portion of the island two years ago, and utilizing it here at Seagull. So I'll pause, answer any questions that the board has. Again, it would be pervious, drainable concrete, with all the aesthetics enhancements, where we have used wooden poles, nautical-themed rope, all of our consistency for aesthetics and what we quote-unquote call Emerald Isle Beautification would be proposed at Seagull and Ocean. Any questions on this particular site?
Doesn't appear so, sir.
Thank you. Moving forward, the second location is the Clark Drive Access. Here you have a visual picture looking towards this, this headed, looking southbound at the current site, and here is your aerial view at Clark and Ocean. At Clark and Ocean, it's a recommendation to install a 30-by-10-foot pad, again of pervious concrete, which you'll see consistent through our notes, marking out the use of five spaces, again with a nautical-themed post and rope. Each of these areas will include trash can accessibility and a bike rack when necessary, and their spacing. So any particular questions about Clark and/or Ocean's installation?
No, but I just recently walked that access. That is one of the most beautiful accesses.
It's gorgeous.
It is.
Yep. Well, thank you for doing the recon, and if you have any other thoughts while you're there, again, for everyone in the audience and those tuned in with us in the worldwide online version, we are striving to do a handful of things simultaneously, trying to help enhance public access to the ocean waters and parking areas and spaces that participate in golf cart, but also doing so with limited or no impact of vegetation, and staying in the dedicated, our goal is to, whenever possible, stay in the dedicated pathway, which is oftentimes a 25-foot public access walkway, or potentially 12 and 1/2. We also have a few that are 15, but when we have access, so we would like to stay out of individual front yards and private properties in the right of way whenever possible. Seeing no questions on Clark and Ocean, we'll roll to the third one. The third location currently has an aggregate material as the basin with wooden timbers, and this is at Cedar Tree Lane Access. Some might say it looks beautiful, it's probably very effective, but unfortunately, without on-surface designation, you will have human beings often being human beings. So we've stated this before, that maybe we don't have a golf cart parking problem, we have a potential opportunity for an operator of a golf cart problem in choosing to park outside of these zones. And so our police department had, I think it was less than three years ago, issued nearly 241 citations in a single summer. We have driven that number down to less than 40 citations. And that's come from an increase of the golf cart parking in the hotspot zones where people were improving the signage, improving the subsurface. In this particular case, again, it would be pervious concrete, designating how many spaces are there. What was traditionally happening is, on a busy weekend, for example, a holiday weekend, this site may hold three carts, and you would see six or seven or eight, and then they would span out. And so what our recommendation is to improve the accessibility of the Cedar Tree Lane Access, is the installation of a 23-by-14-foot pad of concrete, marking out three designated spaces, again, working through this area. The other key component on our previous presentations that were holding through and true to this presentation tonight, is safety for pedestrians and cyclists as well, not just the golf cart drivers and users. So this would be connecting the walkway from Ocean to the wooden platform, again with pervious concrete. So there would be designated parking, identified walking areas, keeping the pedestrians separated from motorized vehicles. Any questions at Cedar Tree and Ocean?
That is for the board now, I'm sorry.
I apologize. So we have vetted this over the last three months as well at Golf Cart in an open public forum, and taken feedback, too. So at this particular placement, Mayor and Board, it's just simply enhancing what's existing there with a drainable material, and making the aesthetics more accessible for those in that zone. Now, the bigger conversation here, are we talking about Mulane? Are we talking about Melanie? So actually, the roadside reads Mulane, and so many of us will look at that, and your mind will try to shift it to Melanie, but the Mulane Street Access, we spent a good 15 minutes debating that at Golf Cart Advisory. The Mulane and Ocean concept is the installation of a 17-by-10-foot pad of pervious concrete, marking out three dedicated spaces, installation of a new wooden bike rack built in-house by our illustrious team at Parks and Recreation, and then there is a wooden pallet that is, we think, installed for some sort of a transition of a step-up, but that wooden pallet was not installed by town staff and is a potential safety and trip hazard. So again, it would be the removement of that wooden pallet near the walkway, and then the completion and improvement of a clear path forward for pedestrians at that site. Any questions, concerns, thoughts, or ideas from the board? We would gladly entertain them. Again, your topics before you are considerations of four sites, at Seagull, Clark, Cedar Tree, and Mulane.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir. Funding-wise, Mayor, the funds are in position, and we have the golf cart dollars and cents that are allocated in your packet and motion, and the recommendation from the Golf Cart Advisory Committee and staff would be to move forward with each of these four sites at a cost not to exceed what is currently available in the dedicated fund.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to commend the Golf Cart Committee today. That's a good job. That's a good job on all of them.
I'd like to make a motion, authorizing the town manager and staff to proceed with the golf cart parking improvements at Seagull, Clark, Cedar Tree, and Mulane as proposed by the GCAC.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Thank you all. All right. Item number 16 would be the appointment of a new town attorney firm. The board is asked to appoint a new attorney firm to represent the Town of Emerald Isle at the December meeting. As we know, Attorney Richard Stanley is retiring. His retirement is effective December 31, 22, after serving our town faithfully for 42 years. So I'll open it up for the board's discussion.
We don't make a motion, does he stay?
I doubt it.
By default.
I doubt it.
I'm not the attorney, but.
Doubt it, but we can ask.
Well, I think he and Mr. Floyd are dear friends, so I'm going to back out on my last opportunity to make motions tonight.
Oh, in that case, I'll make a motion to appoint the law firm of Crawley-McIntosh-Callier Hanley Edes as the new firm to represent the Town of Emerald Isle effective January 1, 2023.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. All right. Item number 17 are comments from our town clerk, attorney, and manager. Anna, any comments?
No. The three decides one's a man to choose to you all. Thank you for a wonderful year. I love you for a fantastic 2023. To Richard, thank you for always picking the bow in the past two years. Really perky. I appreciate that more than I'll know, and thank you so much for all you've done for him.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley.
Once again, thank you for honoring me tonight. Thoroughly endured my relationship with the town, and I'm going to miss you guys. Thanks for everything.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zapp.
Yes, sir, thank you. So we have quite a few people that we recognized here this evening, so we'd like to once again thank Officer Bourne for his dedication to Emerald Isle and the hard work and amount of time that went in, and to Chief Panzarella, again, and Officer Blaylock, for all those that put on the car show to generate over $13,000 in inaugural event. For those of you that know me, I'm some sort of a car person, and that was an absolute grand slam. It was not a home run. That ball was cranked out of the park and landed in the parking lot. So thank you to everyone that participated in that event and helped make it what it was. The golf cart funding that we talked about here tonight, and we will look to make those improvements, didn't only come straight from registration fees of those 1,445 people. The Golf Cart Committee had partnered with the Emerald Isle Business Association in 2022 to raffle off a golf cart that was brought to us in part by local vendor John's Golf Cars. We're pleased to announce that that program will have begun again for the 2023 raffle. We're well ahead of it. We began with ticket sales launched immediately following the Christmas parade, and ticket sales will be made available on that raffle all the way through March 11, and we plan to draw a ticket for this brand-new, near $13,000 or $14,000 loaded golf cart at the St. Patrick's Day Festival. So this is a shameless plug. Tickets are $20 each, six for 100. If you haven't yet purchased your spouse or committed partner of a long period of time, a great holiday gift. Nothing fits better than a $20 golf cart ticket. If you love them a lot, you have to remember that you would get them six for 100. 20 says you like them, six says you love them, and then when you buy that golf cart for them and you're riding around Emerald Isle, we'll even throw in a free registration for all of 2023. That's on Mayor Holland. He wants to wish you a Merry Christmas as well.
I thought you were going to say dedicated parking.
No, no. But I want to end with this, that this is very, to me, I've had the privilege of working at four exceptional local governments. I've had the privilege of working with six different town attorneys, and I have to say that Richard Stanley is quite possibly one of the most pleasant human beings I've ever worked with, one of the most intelligent men I've ever had the opportunity to call a colleague, and I personally, for the guidance I've received over the last near three and a half years, has been invaluable and priceless, and so, sir, from all of us, from our entire team, we will miss you emphatically. That is all.
Thank you, sir. Very well said. Mr. Taylor.
Thanks again for.
Thanks again, Jim.
Coming out and.
Maybe not.
Coming out and being very passionate about the town and things that go on. We all ran to be elected because we love where we live at, and we try to make it better for everybody that we can, and sometimes it's some tough calls up here, trying to figure out exactly which way to go and what to do, and it's nice hearing from you, it's nice hearing from the people, and on both sides of the, on the way the dog park turned out, and the way we're developing this UDO. We're trying to make it better. We're trying to protect us from people that want to come in and change Emerald Isle and make it a little bit different as far as building hotels, whatever it might be. So that's why we're looking at this UDO, we're flattening the lot out beside you, we're filling in. So we're working really hard, trying to find the right path to take, and we're all human up here, and we're learning as we go, too, so please be patient with us and understand that part of it. As far as Richard goes, it's been amazing for me. I've been sitting up here about five years now, and he's been wonderful. I mean, it's, everything everybody's said about him is tenfold, and I've enjoyed the conversation, I've learned a lot, he's been a great mentor for me as a newly-elected commissioner, and I can't thank you enough, and I'm truly going to miss you, too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Finch.
Mark said a mouthful, but you know, I do thank you all for coming out and expressing your concerns, whether it's a dog park or golf cart parking, whatever it may be. But this board is diligently, all the time, working for what's best for Emerald Isle and not for us individually, and we will continue to do so. Richard, I can only say simply, thank you. I couldn't say enough. I've only gotten to know you for the last seven years, and you've been outstanding. It's been a pleasure and a privilege getting to know you. Lastly, I'd like to just say Merry Christmas to each and every one of you, and have a Happy New Year and a safe New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Normisle.
I don't have to go last this time. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. All right. Ms. Paxton's, she's hiding behind little, or big John, behind little John. Ms. Paxton brings us flowers every year, aren't they? Aren't they nice? Thank you, ma'am. And the Garden Club puts together a beautiful tree for us each year, so we thank the Emerald Isle Garden Club. Mr. Richard and family, thank you. I appreciate you. I send a lot of emails to Mr. Richard from time to time. I just need legal opinions and legal advice, and we go through different things, and I'll tell you, he's an amazing man at the craft of, with the craft of his profession. I appreciate you, and thank you for your service. Thank you all for coming, and a sincere Merry Christmas to all.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Vogel.
Congratulations to Ethan Bourne, well-deserved, at 960 hours, and that's a lot. So well-deserved for him. Richard, thank you very much. Your legacy will live on here in Emerald Isle. Forty-two years is amazing. I've had the pleasure of, not from this seat, but just being in town and knowing how you've poised Emerald Isle for the next 42 years. Brian's got some big shoes to fill, but he's tenacious, so I'm sure he'll. Yeah. Good choice. I'm glad that we were able to hire their firm. Thank you for, everyone for coming and for all of your comments. It's always greatly appreciated. Like I mentioned before, it makes our job easier when we're hearing and we're able to listen, and that's what we're here for. Planning Board, Michelle, Town Staff, awesome job on the UDO presentation. That has been going on for the last 12 months, a lot of hard work and dedication to that project, so I'm glad to see some of those things coming to fruition in the next couple of months. Last thought, we have to, as we approach our work as commissioners and town staff, have a long-term approach to the work that we're doing. Two hundred, over 230,000, do I have that right? Cars went through the intersection of Coast Guard Road last month. That's a lot. There's a lot of traffic, things are changing, and they're happening rapidly, so I'm thankful to be sitting here to be a part of that, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I hope everyone gets to enjoy time with their family and friends and enjoying this beautiful place that we get to call home.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Masser.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, wish you a Merry Christmas. Getting back to Richard's 42 years, I've had the privilege of serving 21 of those with him, but most of all, he's been my friend for 34 years, and that's what's important to me. Good luck to you, Richard.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep it short. Congratulations, Ethan Bourne. Thank you to the town staff for the work put in. Thank you to our elected officials for the work that they put in. And thank you for everybody for being here, regardless of your stance on any issue we talk about. The fact that you're here and the fact that you're involved shows that you care. Richard Stanley, took a minute when they were going through some of the UDO updates, because I've heard those a few times, and I hear, I hear, you know, I've been, I've lived here for 15 years, I've lived there for 10, I've served for this long. I took a quick minute to try to put it into perspective 42 years, and the best way I could think of doing that was, what was I doing 42 years ago? And I found myself, you know, I was in kindergarten. Not to be funny, not to make like, not to be funny, and I tried to wrap my mind around everything that I, you know, the life that I've lived in that period of time, and for you to have served this town the way that you have for that long, it's, I can't put it into words. It's amazing, and that's a gross understatement. So thank you, sir. Thank you. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Have a good night.